We're all tuning in and everybody that's here, may I have a roll call?
Trustee Stevens, Trustee Myers, Trustee Compton.
Here.
Trustee Landry.
Here.
Trustee Swenson.
Here.
Trustee Waschleger.
Here.
President Fannerstall.
Here. At this time, if there are any public comments, I'm sorry, we are going to do the pledge of allegiance. We have two Boy Scouts here, Ethan Bull and Dominic Hausch. Our pledge of allegiance is going to be led by Dominic Hausch. If you want to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. You can step right up to the podium there. Everybody rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have public comments for items that are not on the agenda. If anybody has comments for items that are not on the agenda. Seeing as there are none, we will move on to the first item, which is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes for the January 8th, 2018 meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, I'm going to throw in that I'm going to ask the board that there was just a few typos. That if they be corrected, I think they're already noted, but they, everybody knows what they said. It was just like misspelling on one thing. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of the motion to approve the voucher payments in the amount of $202,427.09.
I move to pay the bills for $202,427.03.
Oh nine.
Oh nine.
Oh nine.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve for $202,427.09. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item, we have a consideration of actions related to licenses and permits. We have, what was that? Consideration of actions related to licenses and permits. The first one, we have our actions related to the consideration of a complaint against J.C. Bogars LLC formerly located at 352 Cottonwood Avenue. Juan Montano, president, I believe is here. And that public hearing was opened at the last meeting and...
It was, it was set at the last meeting. Just to be clear, this isn't really a quote, "a public hearing." This is a hearing, really akin more to a judiciary hearing, but the board can choose or has chosen to handle it in a little bit more of an informal way. I think the intent is to hear from Mr. Montano on his, on his license and what his plans are for the future.
Alright, so at this time, do you want to, Juan, would you like to come up and, I mean, do you want to present to the board?
Well, I'm getting just a little, I was keeping the license.
Please stand up if you could just, and identify yourself, just for the minutes.
My name's Juan Montano, I was around J.C. Bogars, 352 Cottonwood Avenue. Well, you know, I, I tried to be here in this town, you know, I've been here for eight years and I was trying to look for a new location to keep doing my business here for my customers and, and right now, as it is, I haven't found a place, but, you know, I was thinking, and I'm thinking about it, you know, like having my, my place still here, you know, after eight years and this, um, location, you know, and a community, you know, I like this, you know, this, this place, you know, this town, so.
So you're, just for me to understand it correctly and just for myself and if others on the board have questions, but, so at this time, you don't know where you would be, you're hoping to maybe open somewhere else in Heartland up?
Not, yeah, not exactly right now, you know, but this is my mind and, but at this moment, I don't have it, so. But I do want to keep doing business here, so, you know, I have, uh, customers, they become more like friends and my family or whatever, you know, and they still want to have my food and, you know, be served as I was doing at my old place, so.
Do you have a place in mind or you're just, at this time?
At this time, not, not at this time right now, you know, but I'm, I'm still open to look for a place, you know, so I can keep doing business here, so.
How long have you been closed here?
Uh, well, I opened up for the Christmas light or three lights or whatever, you know, for a day or two, you know, but, you know, just haven't been fully open for a while, so. And I'm not in this location anymore, so, you know.
Right, and I guess that, for myself, I shouldn't say I guess, I'm going to ask the question. Based on the conditions we have in the liquor license, are you currently using it?
Well, not this one here though, I mean, I had the other one at the other location, but not, not this license at this moment, so.
The license from this municipality you're not using?
Not, not at this.
The license at another, and I understand that we have no jurisdiction over another municipality.
Yes, 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 yeah, like I said, you know, at this moment, physically, I don't have another establishment, you know, to, to function, uh, the license, but it's on my mind to do it, so.
I think based on, and I'm just kind of saying to you, it seems like the village did a lot to try to, and nothing's been decided. This is more of a hearing, as was alluded to by the administrator, but the village really tried to work to say, hey, what's going on? When are you going to be open and stuff like that? And it's actually not too stringent, you know, 15 days out of 60, but one thing that we in Heartland work very hard for is obviously, well, as you've seen for some of it, is, is building up that business community.
No, it does, you know, and as I said, you know, I mean, it wasn't just my, uh, ups, I had no ups, but being pushed out of the place, or to be honest, you know, I mean, there was just one thing or another, I was just never good enough for the, the land, to be honest, you know, and, you know, obviously, they wanted something else in there, but not me, so. And, and like I said, you know, I talked to a few people, you know, I mean, I think Heartland's doing a good job, it's started growing, you know, doing some changes that need to be done, you know, unfortunately, I'm not part of it right now, but I want to be, you know, so, you know, like I said, I was here for eight years and, I mean, I got my ups and downs, but I like the community though, so.
You were, um, your license was issued in July, correct?
Yes.
And in August, there was already a, a sign in front of the door, sometimes that would say, "Come to the establishment in the municipality of Stone Bank." Is that correct?
Yeah.
Did you know that was happening when you got the license?
Uh, no, no, it wasn't.
So from between July and August?
Yeah, 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 there was a last minute thing, yes, so.
Okay. Alright, does, um, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
No.
Does anybody else on the board have anything that they would like to add?
See, there are people that wanted to put that in basically, and to tie up a license, we've never done that. Because we've always had people that, when it was available, they would come in and apply for it without a place to put it, and then they tie it up and sit on it for, well, however long it can. And that's the only problem, you're just tying up a license if you've got...
Yes, I mean, like, as I said, you know, the only reason I keep it is because of my mind, you know, I wanted to keep doing business here and this community, you know, and otherwise, I should have surrendered right away, though. I have no, no reason to keep it if I'm not thinking and do a business here at all.
But I mean, would you come back here, like, and all of a sudden, we find out it's June?
Oh yeah, no, no, Tony, you know, I, you know, I, as I said, you know, I, I like this community, you know, I've been here for a while and, you know, and it's just, you know, the place where I was, I was not wanting, so, it's all, it's all the situation, also.
I think our hands are pretty well tied, seeing there's a state statute that says if he's not open for a certain number of days during a 60-day period, 45 days, and he hasn't been meeting that. State statute said that we have to do something with his license, and he has no place picked out here. He would like to be here, but he has no place in mind or even negotiating on it. I think we just have to take the license. We have no choice.
Yes, I mean, it's just, well, you just come up, that's fine with me though, you know, as I said, you know, the only reason I keep it is because I was thinking and keep doing business here, so, but, you know, you rather have it, you know, that's, that's fine with me too, so, no problem with that, so.
Alright, so at that time, thank you, Juan. At that, at this time, if there are no other comments from the board, um, we will consider the action related to the revocation of Class B retailer license issued to J.C. Bogars LLC.
It could be appropriate that if you're going to revoke the license, that the motion be that the complaint is sustained and that the license is therefore revoked.
Everybody, so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the complaint has been received and at this time...
Sustained, just to be clear.
Okay, the complaint has been sustained and we are voting to, the motion is to revoke the license. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried, that license will be revoked. I do thank you for all of your time in Heartland, though, unfortunately, without it being opened. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration for an application for restricted species permit to allow three dogs at one residence. Just to remind everyone, this was postponed from our last meeting. It wasn't necessarily tabled, it was just postponed to this meeting. So, is the owner of that, do you want to come and speak if you could? And if you could just say your name and address for the record?
Sure. Eric Ramel, 780 East Imperial Drive.
Alright, uh, do you want to kind of describe from your end what happened at the last meeting? The permit, the permit request was in. We postponed it until I thought it was best that you could be here due to circumstances that were different than what we sometimes see, but so that you had a chance to be here so you could answer questions for our board members?
I don't know why I'm here. I mean, we filled out an application and I got a letter in the mail that said that's why we're here.
At the last meeting, you had filled out your application as is proper. However, the application was filled out after. You had already received the dogs and after there was incidences there where it had, I'm going to use the word snapped at somebody where it broke clothing, and then at that time, the Heartland Police Department came to follow up on that call.
Yeah.
And the dog ran loose and then broke clothing or snapped at the officer. Uh, so it's not typical that when the officers are going to check on a call, that the dog is running loose again and snapping at them, so I'm kind of, I would like to give you a chance to be able to speak to the board, because in my estimation, I can't speak for all of them.
Sure, I get it now, okay.
That's why you're here.
Didn't know a whole lot of that story, so that's, that's fine.
Yep.
Um, no, so, I've, I've lived in the house 19 years now, um, and I've had continually multiple dogs over the 19 years. Quite honestly, from what I was told and what I understood was we were allowed to have up to three dogs without having any problems with it or anything of that nature. Come to find out afterwards, it's two dogs. But to get to the story where we're at, um, the gal that I have been dating moved in with me and her two kids and of course, came with a dog. So that's how, you know, a blended family, we've gotten now three dogs. And, uh, I've got the invisible fence throughout our yard. Um, I've never had an issue with the dogs and the dog was in the midst of training. I still have flags up in the, in the property and around the yard. And then it was actually after it snowed, um, you could, I've got video cameras around the house as well for security purposes, and you could see where the dog was running down the driveway barking, as dogs do when people walk by, and slid through the fence. And at the time where she got corrected from the fence, um, is what happened. It was the same time as she crossed the lady. And even afterwards, uh, you could see the dog hopping and jumping and the tail wagging and, and not vicious attack, it was circumstantial. Um, but obviously, you know, I gave the videos to Heartland PD, they're on file here, so.
So that was her dog, then actually, then I...
It was my dog.
Your dog, I mean, you got two and she can live with you and brought hers.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Because we were at the, when we got the information, you just were adding more dogs to your...
No, 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 we're a blended family.
Yeah.
I have a question.
I inherited five kids and a dog, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
You said you've been here 19 years, you've had dogs.
Hmm.
Have you just, is this the first time you've applied for a license?
Mm-hmm.
Did you not know that they needed license?
Nope. No, in fact, I've talked to several of my neighbors and nobody knew that we needed licenses either.
Are you talking about license or the, you know, the two?
The village license for the dogs.
I didn't know any of it, quite honestly. My, my neighbor that lives behind me had five dogs.
This is for restricted species permit?
Yeah.
And the reason that this is coming up is because there was more than two dogs. But not a dog license? Correct. Not, not the license, you know, you know you need a license.
I did not, but I did now.
You didn't know you needed a state license?
Absolutely not.
A state dog license? A county dog license?
No.
You never do that?
No.
What does this go on, tax bills every year?
Yeah, it's always, it's on, it's part goes out with your tax bill, you can pay it.
Are you a redder or owner?
Owner.
And it comes with, on the back of the tax bill?
I honestly had to look at it, it's escorted in my mortgage.
This is the second time, though, isn't it the second time we've had a problem with your dog attacking somebody?
Negative, no, never.
Just the first time?
Absolutely.
First time, but it was two people during the first time?
No, just one.
The policeman?
The policeman.
Chief begging.
It was the same day, the one incident with the woman, and then that one, just to correct, was a small puncture wound. Now, and then the officer came and that's when it snapped at the officer and broke the clothing, but not, not another wound, but it was the same, same day.
Same day, but two attacks.
What type of dog is it?
It's a mutt, rescue dogs.
Is it outside quite often, unattended?
No. No, they, they can, well, in the summertime when it's nice out, I have a dog door so they can come and go as they want, but again, I mean...
So you weren't outside when this happened?
No, I was in the home.
You weren't, so nobody was home and the dogs were outside?
Mm-hmm.
Oh my, okay.
What if you got a security fence?
Yep.
You don't basically sort of dog out there.
Well, is, is one of those electronic?
That's correct.
With the collars?
Yes.
Okay. So just, and I'm, I'm going to run a question here, this is something that may, well, this is important, at least to me. If the power goes out...
Battery backup.
And the dogs are, but what I'm getting to you is there is absolutely nothing to restrain them if they decide to just bolt?
Oh no, there's a battery backup.
Okay, so...
So it'll run up to 12 hours?
Yep.
On its own, if power failure.
Okay.
I also have an in-ground for the dog fence, and I have one dog that doesn't care, he just goes right through it. Not all the time, but he will decide he wants to if he wants. And you can raise it as high as you want, they know it's, it's a short zap.
Yeah.
Um, I don't... There was an example already that he went through and he, he got through it.
She's in training.
How old is she?
Well, the, the dog is seven years old, but it's only been with me for about four months.
So if it was in training, why was it alone?
Well, the other two dogs were out with it. And quite honestly, she'd shown that she had been stopping through the fence. So, again, what happened was is it snowed and she went through on the ice.
Both sides?
So it's not that, yeah, you could clearly see the dog trying to stop, it just slid through with the ice.
But what does the video show then why the dog bit this other person?
It was at the same time that she met the person that she got corrected.
So because she got corrected, she bit the person?
No, I think she was just trying to stop herself and collided into her.
For me, I, I have difficulty, and this is, I'm just, I don't have many other questions. I have difficulty with the no supervision of the dogs without any mechanical restraint and only an electronic restraint, but I don't have any other questions. I don't think it's ever a good idea to just leave them out, but that, I guess that's neither here nor there, because this is whether or not we're allowing the number of dogs.
And so I, let me comment, and I think we've talked about this before, when we're talking about restricted species and exceeding the number of animals at a, at a household. In particular, at a household where there may or may not be some record of, of problems. There is a process in the police department when an animal is misbehaving, I'll say. Uh, when an animal is misbehaving and it is directed towards the individual animal and the owner. The restricted species conversation, or the allowance to go beyond the two that are allowed in the code, really is, as I understood the village board when you were talking about why we wanted to add this, uh, is really related to, I'm going to call it, the facilities. And what's available in terms of space and how the animals are handled in general, things relating to the number of animals. I think those are the things that you ought to focus on, while certainly there is a concern that there perhaps was in this instance, a bite of some sort, under whatever circumstances they may be. I think the police department has a process for handling that if it continues. Now, sadly, of course, that means in the worst case scenario, somebody else gets bit. Uh, we don't like that, don't want that, but at the same time, there is a process. I would encourage you to let that process play out and in the restricted species conversation, address any concerns you might have over facilities.
See, this is a little different, Drew, I mean, you bring in, that's like your own child. But the reason why this dog came up years ago, there were people in town that had five or six and they kept raising dogs. And if you were to go back a while, you got to find out what we went through on the village board with dogs. Some people love dogs, they wanted six, and some people didn't want any, and, and that's how it came down to that. But, but I would, the shortness, we can talk about it, you know, that's a lot, that's like having a, a part of your family there.
Absolutely.
You know, and, and, and we should do something about it, but if something like this would happen again, I would say, "Fine," and then hope that, that, that's not, that won't happen again, just that way.
Obviously, yeah, and the dog is, dog is going through other corrections now for training and things of that nature as well for the fence. I've contacted, it's an invisible fence company, it's not one of the lower brands, you get it at Menards or something of that nature, it's the full-blown, very expensive system, so.
I like the fence idea, I mean, I see that and it works.
Sure.
I've got friends who dogs like, yeah, that will break it. I guess my biggest concern, you know, when you're talking, let's forget about that, but the thing about taking the dog. You're keeping these dogs and you've kept them forever, or all these dogs. You don't have a license, you, do you have a, are they have rabies shots?
Of course.
Well, you get them, you take them down to get rabies shots, but you never license them? How do we know that the rabies are current?
I can get you records if you like, the police department has them all.
But I mean, that, that, my concern is that the house that they're staying in, you know, that they're controlled and that they're, they're, they have the rabies and everything, because if they do break out, which can happen accidentally, I understand that. But I don't want to have little kid walking by there and some dog who doesn't have his up-to-date with his rabies shots, because nobody really monitors it, get bit by a dog like that.
Of course not, nobody wants that. But on the other hand, again, I've lived here 19 years, and if the only thing that shows up on is one piece of paper, I've talked to all of my neighbors around me. I've got other neighbors that have three dogs that don't have permits as well. I, it, it's not just to me, I didn't know, there's a lot of people in Hart Ridge subdivision that don't know.
Well, I got, you know, I could drive around the road at a 30 mile an hour speed limit and go 45, because my neighbor says, "Well, they don't ever, yeah, 30 doesn't mean..." You go 45, go 50, whatever you want. You know, just because your neighbors don't, but as a, there's a responsibility with the dogs. I mean, I've had, I've had, have had expensive dogs and hunting dogs and, you know, I make sure they're maintained and everything, but it's always a concern.
My dogs are very well maintained.
Well, how come they don't license?
License has nothing to do with maintaining them.
Well, yes, because that verifies that the rabies are current.
So does my vet.
Well, that, well, that, that leaves me a little bit concerned.
Sure. Because I happen to have that report with me. Um, regarding the dogs, we did get proof from Mr. Ramel that there is rabies, uh, current rabies vaccination, that, uh, in one case, from December of 17 to December of 18, so that one's current. Uh, looks like they, they all go, or two of them go from...
Two, these two are mine.
Okay, so your two dogs go from December of 2017 to 2018, that's when it expires, and the other dog goes from July 13 of 16, and it shows that the rabies vaccination expires 7/13 of 19. So we're, we're good with that.
So they're all, they're all current?
Right. And part of the licensing process is he would need to prove that they have the current rabies vaccination.
Well, now he knows that's just, you know, I hate to say that, because when I get my tax bill and I know it's on there, I don't, I don't read that big page. I look and see how much it is on the bottom.
That's exactly what I do, because my taxes are escorted, I don't, I don't worry about them.
And of the different, the different issues here, one of which is potential biting, the other is dog at large.
Yeah.
And those are, we have provisions, as Administrator Cox said, in order to monitor those things. If there is an issue, we would work with him, and if the issue continues, ultimately use enforcement opportunities that we have to try to correct the problem.
Now, is that a dog at large if you got that security?
Not if it stays on his property, but if it leaves the property.
And when he leaves?
Right.
Or any dog when it leaves him, it gets out of the fence?
Right.
I mean, if you got a fence on it.
I mean, and again, we worked fully with you, I mean, I gave them a jump drive of, here's my video.
Right, he was cooperative with our officer to give us surveillance that showed how this occurred, so.
Screwed myself.
I'll make a motion that we...
Well, I'm helping because of the issue here with safety.
Yeah, of course, of course. I mean, and you saw the video too, I was thinking, you see the dog bouncing around in the...
As long as, with a caveat, they are licensed, uh, animals that are retained, and that we have a, if any future problems with that not being licensed, that we, you know, would address that situation.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that pursuant to, that we approve, uh, this permit, um, as long as they have their rabies shots up to date, and if there is any other situation regarding them getting loose or biting, that we will readdress it at that time.
That they be licensed.
And that they be licensed.
Tell your neighbors.
Uh, any other comments on that? Well, on that, I do, any other... Anybody here want to speak to this? Okay. You know, with the, you know, we're just talking about, you know, having the, having the dogs resident, or the animals resident there. But now anything outside of that has, is totally different. Right, correct, correct. Are the cats are supposed to be registered too, aren't they?
No.
No, not anymore.
I didn't ask, after my neighbors, they said I didn't need them. Alright, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That is granted. Thank you for coming in and taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, next item, we have a bartender's operator's license, which expires June 30th, 2018, for Marcy Best. The police chief and village clerk recommend approval of the license listed above. The applicant has successfully completed the responsible beverage servers course.
I'll second that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Then motion is carried. The next, that permit is granted. Next item, we have a change of agent for Class A beer, Class A liquor. Walgreens Company doing business as Walgreens Store 09365 at 423 Merton Avenue for Gina Podhola as the agent. The police chief and village clerk recommend approval of the agent change as requested. Walgreens has requested the change due to a change in their staff.
I move to approve the change in agent.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to make this change in agent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Then motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is we have items related to bill for an ordinance number 112717-01, an ordinance to amend Chapter 46 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to zoning ordinances. First, we have the continuation of the public hearing. Does anybody here want to speak to this ordinance? Anybody on the board? So we can move to the consideration of adoption of the bill for an ordinance number 112717-01, uh, an ordinance to amend Chapter 46 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to zoning ordinance. With that step being taken, the public hearing closes, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So that has been closed. I'll entertain a motion on this.
I move we adopt the change for ordinance 46, Chapter 46.
Bill for an ordinance 112717-01.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, to adopt bill, the ordinance 112717-01. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve, um, of the site building and landscape plans for Austin Plumbing at 530 Norton Drive.
I move that we approve it with the stipulations stated in the planning commissions.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that with the stipulations in the memo, um, and... Okay, it's been moved and seconded that with the stipulations in the memo and the packet regarding the planning commission, that we approve for Austin, landscape plans and the building plan for Austin Plumbing. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve the design for the water tower painting. And we will have our Director of Public Works to make comments.
Could you be Mike Inwick, Public Works Director? We have three different alternatives for the tower painting. The water towers in the village, which we have three, are coming up for painting. The closest ones for the schedule will be Coventry and Hill Street. One of the reasons why we're looking at the darker part of the bottom of the bulb of the tower is that over time between paintings, dirt and, dirt accumulates underneath the bowl of the water tower. And it doesn't look that nice. We have gone and cleaned the towers every five years to maintain the paint on the towers because it is a very expensive option to paint those towers. So we have these three choices. The one on the far right would be the current way that the towers are painted. We have the Heartland wording up there in the green. The one in the middle would be an option that a lot of communities in the area are going to, where they have in the bottom of the bulb, all the way through the stem of the tower, painted in a darker color to hide that dirt that would build up. And then the one on the left would be just a little bit underneath the basin of the bowl where that would be painted. And the rest of the stem of the tower would be still white. Yes?
No matter which way we go, like say the middle one, we would still be cleaning it on a regular basis. Just because the dirt's covered, we're not going to just let it go, correct?
Right. We would have, what we're going to be doing is coming to the village at a later date for a maintenance contract on our towers. And that would be included. They would have inspections and then also looking at the functionality of the paint coat and the cleaning.
I was going to ask about that. Where, is that proceeding well as far as, do you think we're going to go ahead?
We're still doing our final investigation with that. Hopefully at the next meeting or the second meeting in February, we should have a proposed contract for the board.
But we have to have clean painted towers, that?
As part of the maintenance contract, we would have a painted tower.
They, the, the painting would be done under the new contract.
Oh, okay.
If it gets done.
Okay.
No, the painting would be done under the contract regardless of who's doing it. Either Suez would do it under the contract or the village would be doing it. I sort of misspoke there. Somebody's going to be painting these towers in the next five years. Either they're going to be in the Suez contract or they're going to be done by us. And staff is, is coming forward and basically saying, should we consider an amendment here to the coloring scheme to camouflage, as I put in my notes, to camouflage the dirt and the mildew, as Mike is talking about, that accumulates basically from the center of the bowl or the bulb down. It's a little bit higher than it shows on these, on these particular drawings, but basically it's from the center of the, of the bulb on, down.
Would be a different price. I mean, there's all the...
No.
Same amount paid.
Same amount of pay.
Yep.
You know, years ago when they were going to paint this thing, they came out, a lot of the people are down there, somebody did, they wanted a heart, a heart on the towers. So that didn't come up or anything, not just like the, is the...
No.
No, we just go with the way...
Or the cost of it or something.
We're not asking for a heart. We're not encouraging a heart.
Well, I mean, times change.
Looking for a heart.
Yeah, that's...
Certainly not an H-E-A-R-T heart.
Because that was told that the next time we do it, we're taking into consideration. Just interesting.
The one thing I would like to mention is for Coventry and Hill, because of the age of the towers, we would have to completely strip the existing paint coats before they're recoded. Bristol Cone isn't, isn't that old. It's only about 20 years old. So that would just be a repainting at the time that that one comes up.
20 years old is young?
Yes.
Okay. What's old?
Over 100.
When they strip that paint, don't they have to, like, plasticize the whole thing?
They will have to tent the tower, correct, and collect everything.
So as I mentioned in my memo, the plant commission was more or less split, but because there's seven there, they had to eventually tip it in some way. Interestingly, they did not suggest we stayed with the, the status quo. They did sort of split on one and two. So...
As the administrator has said, it is...
But go G1 out.
As it, as the administrator said, there was enough voting members there to push the full green on the bottom on. And I guess I will, was it green?
Yes.
To match the, the Heartland.
Well, yeah.
It'd be the same color as the lettering.
What color did you think it was?
So you don't need another seven of paint.
Oh, no, it's green. That's funny.
My preference is the, the one on the left, number one.
That's plant commission. We had quite a few. Is it, I think it's, is it okay with the board if I ask for a show of hands, since we do have quite a few people from the public, just for our own? Can we, the, going from the left to right, show of hands, the one on the left, which is just a collar at the top, not green all the way down?
Ooh.
Oh. The one in the middle that is green all the way down?
Woo!
And the one on the farthest right, if, for those that couldn't see viewing, now they can see, all the hands went up, except for one. The hand was on the, oh, go ahead.
Didn't we have an American flag on each side?
You want to get up there and paint it?
I could do that.
Oh, he's got it. Okay. The one, on the farthest right, that's all white, just with the green lettering for Heartland.
Chief, this isn't paint by numbers, though.
Every...
See, you're going to run, how many are in the plant commission? Twelve?
Seven.
Seven. There's seven here. And you're going to bring up whether you want this or that?
Oh, no, these aren't called the plant commission.
You'll never get an opinion.
We just got an opinion.
Yeah. I had one too.
What was your opinion?
No, no, I, I, I like, I like number one frankly.
Okay.
Until they told me that it looks dirty, the white gets dirty or something, it takes time.
Right.
And the only reason I brought it up, we went through this, when they wanted a heart on, Heartland on, a heart up on the tower.
Right, right.
And they told people that, well, we're going to put that on next time we paint. So now it came up 10 years later. And now nobody wants the heart on it, so...
Well, since we've kind of put this out and talked with the companies, either one will be doing it. We're, we're going to go with the, unless we really want to take a veer here and change the design at the top, but at this, well, I'd like one. Yeah, I'm not going to decide it on my own.
I'll make a motion that we go with, for the painting on the water towers, number two, that has green on the, middle of the bulb all the way down.
I'll second it.
All I care is about water coming out of it.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded for the green from nine-tenths of the way up down. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion's carried.
That was your little interlude in the middle of the meeting.
Yes. Thank you all for your willingness to jump in there and, yeah.
Decision's decision.
Help along. Next item on the agenda, we have items related to the public improvements in Four Winds West subdivision. Consideration of a motion to approve the reduction in the letter of credit for the Four Winds West subdivision in the amount of $306,881.03.
Also move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question. Mike?
Yes.
I noticed in the letter to Mr. Cox, it says, village staff performed an inspection of the streets and public storm sewer improvements.
Yes.
When were you out there? When did you do the inspection? Were you out there? Did you personally go and do this?
I reviewed the roads and the signage. And our utility operations supervisor looked at the storm sewers.
Okay, so you were out there?
Right. And Mike Kraszewski of our staff was out there also reviewing the streets, the curbs, and the sidewalks.
Okay. And everything, in your estimation, was fine?
Right. I agree with the village engineer's assessment here that there is a situation with the privately maintained pond. And we have $40,000 of the letter of credit that will be held to make sure that that gets taken care of.
Anything else? Anything else from any other members of the board? Nothing? All right. We have a motion and a second for this reduction in the letter of credit for Four Winds West subdivision in the amount of $306,881.03. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item regarding this is a consideration of Resolution Number 122, 2018-01, a resolution accepting public improvements in the Four Winds West subdivision.
Also moving in.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to accept these improvements in Four Winds West. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve a We Energies electric distribution easement at the Coventry Water Tower Site.
I was here before at an earlier meeting. In reviewing the permit request from We Energies to replace the existing cables in Hartland subdivision from 8 KV up to 25 KV, we noticed that there are some areas that don't have a recorded easement. Part of this is on our water tower site on Coventry Lane. So we're working with We Energies to have a formal document with the easement. This would not interfere with our operations. It's on the southerly portion of the property and then also on the west of the driveway. The two buildings for the telecommunications services on the water tower are not in the way of this easement. And for any future plans that the village would have, this would not encumber us.
Thank you. Okay, so as stated and as was in the packet, there's the, we have this, this easement. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to allow this easement for We Energies Electric Distribution. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve change order number two, final, to the 2017 paving program contract with Payne and Dolan, Inc., to adjust the final quantities with a decrease in the amount of $108,292 for a revised contract amount of $940,313.
I'll move that we approve the decrease in the payment or the change order two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the decrease in the change order, which is the final, in the new contract amount of $940,313. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve the job description for the position of Public Works Seasonal Crew Leader.
So as the board will recall, as we've made some adjustments over at the Public Works Department, one of the items that we were going to bring in was a seasonal supervisory position that would have primarily as its function overseeing the seven or so seasonal staff that we bring on every year that perform a lot of the park and cemetery maintenance. That description has been created and completed by staff. One of the notable differences from what I just explained is that there is also a provision in there that would allow at specific direction of either the Public Works Director or the two operations supervisors, this position could act, act as a supervisor in their stead. So when they're off, if there is a time when we need to have a supervisor on duty that others are not available, we could rely on this individual. Remember, the intent here is that we're trying to make sure that we have an opportunity for staff to learn and exercise supervisory responsibilities so that we can, in the future, hopefully, have trained and, and experienced staff that can move up through the ranks.
I think that's a good idea.
And with that, we'll entertain a motion so that we can approve that job description because we hadn't done that one before. Because now summer's coming.
I'll move to approve the job description.
Altogether now. One of you go to a second. Go ahead.
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the job description. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is an update on the development north of County Highway K and west of County Highway KE as a, as proposed by the Newman Companies. This, I guess it's okay that I, this is just an update for the board and the public to let people know kind of where, not kind of, but where things are at. So do we have public comments? Yes, please. Okay. If, just your name and address, just for...
Jeff Anson, owner of Hoggers Pub, 335 Cottonwood is my address. I'm in kind of a unique situation with owning the bar. A lot of people have been talking about this development. And the people that I have talked to live in different subdivisions, Bristol Cone, Four Winds, down here, nobody wants this. I haven't heard anyone say they want this project. Everybody thinks it's ridiculous. So I think it's really important that we get it out to the people of Heartland, exactly what this is, and let the people of Heartland decide.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the comments. As with any other comments from the public, as with this, as on the agenda, it's not scheduled for us to make a decision, but it's an update so that we can let the public know kind of where things stand now. I got, I can't get too, I suppose we don't need a motion. We can just open for conversation, correct?
There is nothing to do. It's really to kind of give an update. And the update is that, and I know that Paul Decker is here, our supervisor representative and the county board chair, who can talk a little bit about the road. One of the significant issues in conversation related to development of the area basically between Winkleman and Mary Hill, north of Highway K, has been the location and the timing of the construction of the rerouted Highway KE. And there has been a lot of discussion on that over the last few decades. But in, in the last two years in particular, as we've tried to come to some closure on when that would be done and how that would get done, I don't know if you want Paul to talk about that, or I can just comment that basically we're at a, at a position where the county timing of that is, is not terrific in our, in our view of... The Newman Company has asked the plant commission and the village board to consider a, an adjustment to the comprehensive plan to allow the development up there that they have proposed. And the plant commission is currently considering that, so...
Do you want to give any comments, Paul?
Sure.
Your title and all?
The challenge, well, I'm supervisor for District 13, so I represent Village of Heartland, Village of Neshota, and City of Delafield on the county board. I'm also chairman of the county board as elected by the county board supervisors. So with that, representing Heartland for the last nine years on the board, as Dave said, this has been, the entire KE, K thing has been in, on, in front of us for that period of time. Now that it's come to fruition in terms of somebody actually wanting to develop there, there are several challenges to that location. Considering that there's been development already east of there with the Seetman property, the old Murphy Farm, we've adjusted to the fact that the original county plan where KE would be going on the north route to connect is what's still on the county plan. It has been proposed that they would like to do that with this particular development. I was apprised of that this last year, year and a half. And I explained to the village, primarily to Dave and to Jeffrey, that one of the challenges is, as far as the county is concerned, we do everything on our capital plan, and this does qualify as a capital plan, as a capital improvement on a five-year plan. We don't do anything of any major improvement unless it gets on the five-year plan. To get it on the five-year plan takes quite a bit of work. And at this point, because of the growth of the county, we have a large number of similar items coming in front of us on a continual basis. The original number to do this change is, for that particular location, because the amount of excavation is close to $5 million. That type of capital sum onto the county capital budget would take five years to get on. And I'd have to argue on behalf of the village, and I've done this, but to get it on, again, what other priorities does the county have? Because we don't do anything at the county unless we put 20% down and pay everything off in 10 years. We are a very fiscally conservative county, and I've maintained it as your county board chair, so we adhere to certain circumstances. On this particular location, as it was presented to me this last year, no, by, I'm limited by what I can move up. And as your supervisor, I certainly would try to get this on. But as chairman of the board, I can tell you that I've had to tell other co- as chairman of the board, I can tell you that I've had to tell other county board supervisors, just because it's in your district doesn't mean we can move it up. We've had other similar types of developments come in front of us and they get moved out. We also do, as you said, have quite a bit on the capital plan as it's currently been developed. So, there's a lot of growth in the county, a lot of development going in the county. We are adding courthouse towers because we are at our end of use in terms of our current courthouse situation. That's going to happen in the next five years. So, I can just say that trying to do this from the county standpoint, to do a major intersection, will probably not happen within five years or be paid for even with that for seven to nine years at the best that I could get it on the capital plan.
You know, I'm surprised at that because it's been ten years since they've been, the county's been wanting to cut down the hill. Wasn't that planned on the, because the last I heard from one supervisor that's on the road, he's way south of us and he wasn't quite sure and he says Youngblood Road was supposed to go north where it is right now and cut over and that's good enough for me. And I doubted whether he even knew where Youngblood Road was.
Right. It was, it's been on there, but to be approved onto the capital plan to actually get it done? It's approved, the land use plan is approved, but until there's a development like this where there's traffic or other reasons for us to put money into it, we don't do it just out because we should, you know, it needs to be done. Right now, there's not enough traffic count to warrant that type of expenditure.
Because that's a bad, horrible, horrible intersection if you're going to Merton. You come up Youngblood and take a right and another.
I will say this, you know, personally, as far as being just the county board supervisor in this area, I'd like to see that location get done from a safety standpoint, but to move it up in the capital plan for the county, it would not warrant that cost.
Can I tell people to take Ryan Road over, come in the back where you could go in the Merton? And stay off of K because it's just the same distance.
And we know there are certain times and I know I've talked with some of you, we know that traffic will continue to go up in this area, but it's still not at a critical point where we'd have to do something. And I'm not saying that I won't try to get this on to the capital plan because again, but it'll get pushed out.
But now, basically now, if they want to come around and Seapman and this lower forty guy, if he cuts through his lane and goes on the Winkleman Road, how are you ever going to handle that on? That's a problem.
Development, as you know, as the municipality is up to the municipalities and the townships. The county gets involved only when, usually when there's a traffic issue or road widening, but at that point, it would be up to you or whoever would want to, whatever municipality is involved in allowing that to happen. If that happens and development happens, as I've told Mr. Cox, Mr. Flender still, at that point, we would then start looking at it, but again, you're talking, the best we could do to get it on a plan is five, well, now six years because we're in eighteen, so.
See, now they could come out of that property because there's a right of way on the K.
Exactly.
Out of there or cut over to Winkleman. I mean, it isn't a thing that a county can come in and say you can't get out of that.
You can, they can, you could put the right of way in and that is up to you as the jurisdiction to approve that. If you approve that right of way, then that development can happen in that way.
Because I, I mean, just because people call you on that, that the county turn around and says they won't let you out on the K and I said, I don't think the county, as long as there's a right of way on the K.
It's not, it's not our jurisdiction.
That's not, you let them out and if it don't fit, the people got to wait.
Right. Right. And, yeah, and exactly. And at that point, you give the county more ammunition to do something at that point. But I can tell you, even in this area, that you're going to have in front of this board, probably at some point, be talking about eighty-three because I know the City of Delafield is looking at development. We've got other developments in the area that are going to continue to press upon us the traffic increase. So, we are concerned about that and again, because of the way budgets happen, the only budgeting money we're getting from the state is for maintenance and improvements. There's nothing for building new.
Now, that five million or a rub off it in a, is that a county? That's what the county would have to put up?
Well, that's what the, that's what it would take to do that.
To do that.
Now, if we're going to, and I, as I explained, if we're going to do the entire five million, that would put it off further and further. If the village and the developer get involved and want to contribute to that, you lessen that amount, but quite honestly, we look at the return on investment and what the county taxpayers would have to pay for that. We look for a less than twenty-year payback and that isn't there right now.
Because I had a call the other day, it just has been coming up now. I don't know where the information came from, but all of a sudden he called me, he said, you're crazy, you're going to spend five million dollars to help that developer? I said, where do you get that from? I mean, it hasn't even been, this is the first time we've talked about it, that we come out and discussed it.
Well, and that's, we did an engineering study and that's an estimate.
That's right.
And that's an estimate. At this point, until there was a final, like you said, the excavation alone, the change of grade, there's, there could be a lot more to that.
But now, actually, Dave, what would that, if we went along with this without the county repair and they came out on the Winkleman or they came out on K, what's the village stuck into that?
What do you mean?
I mean, like this amount of five million the village is going to spend.
Nothing.
For, you know, what are we going to spend if we went along without the county's work and just let that subdivision in? Just if you got an estimate.
The village wouldn't spend anything.
Well, that's what I, that's what I've understood before.
No, in fact, that's what I was talking about in my notes is that, in my note to the board, is that with the timeframe that Chairman Decker is talking about and no real ability to move it forward, I think, let it go.
Well, the reason I brought it up.
And if in fact the development occurs, let it, let it connect with the two counties.
Yeah, the reason I brought it up, I get calls and I see people and they put, they're hanging, you're going to spend five million dollars to help that developer? I said, if we spend five million dollars, it's going to be on a community center before I'm going to build a road.
The, on the, when it comes, the five million, as Mr. Decker alluded to, that's what the cost of the whole project is.
No, I understand that.
And, but I just want to say, and there was conversations whether between the developer, when we look at something like this, we look at all options. Now, we're your, we're whoever's getting information, I don't know, but when we look at this, we look at all options to try to see where we're going and right now, all we have on the table is the village putting in nothing and they can connect to county roads and it's going to be a long time before that five million dollar project's going to get done.
But that's what I wanted to bring out because I'm having people tell me that the village is going to put up bond five million dollars for that sub divider.
Nope.
And I said, you know, and that's why I wanted to bring it up tonight.
Okay. Well, it's time for the public, the village is not.
That's all fake news.
The village is not.
Can I ask, can I comment on something that has nothing to do with the road? I mean, being that the road's a kind of a dead issue, can we comment on something else right now?
Well, we can't, as long as it has to do with this development.
It does. That's what I'm asking. I actually went out and took pictures yesterday of all the different elevations of that, from different sides and also from the driveway where Mr. Gebhardt lives on his driveway. I believe there's two houses back there. And I have to say, in my personal opinion, I think this is if, one of the, if not the worst location to put a hundred and twenty, what, a hundred and twenty-six was it condos? Because anybody who can afford four hundred to six hundred thousand dollar condos is going to be a senior or somebody, I'm guessing fifty-five and up. Now, I'm not trying to be discriminatory, but, and you want to add a hundred and twenty-six condos, that's what, two hundred extra cars in that area? Our area, and that, it's all, I grew up right there. That area's already saturated and I think it'd be a huge mistake to put that development in that spot.
And we can, we can.
When we look at, we look at a plan like this, why it takes five years to get on a capital plan is because the engineering studies, we'd have to look at the traffic studies and then you're looking at the cost. And if a cost goes up as a result of increased traffic or you have to widen roads, we'd want to know all that before we commit to that. That's why it takes that kind of study at the county level.
Well, and let me also say, I'm not saying that seniors are bad drivers. I'm just saying that being that my mother have, can't see out of one eye, it's just, I don't think it's a good location to be adding that development. I think it's completely...
Well, there would be a lot, to your point, when we looked at it just very briefly and talking to our engineers, between the grading and you look at what that intersection would mean, the amount of traffic we would anticipate, there's a lot of work to that.
Yeah.
And that's why it's at that current cost level. And I can tell you, just recently, and we've got a county board meeting tomorrow night, one of the challenges we have, as you're going to have, is, you know, increase in costs are happening in most places. So, we have, you know, that would be the challenge I would see in five to six years, so.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time to come in, Mr. Decker, and to explain not only just from what we're discussing here, as Mr. Decker said, he's a resident, but he's also the chairman of the county board, so it gives us an in on some very valuable info. With everything that just went on, I want to take a moment to make sure the public knows at this point in time, and I think that everybody that was involved in talks, the administrator and Mr. Decker, the village is not spending five million dollars. That's not even, something that's up for discussion right now, what's up for discussion is that we have a developer that is looking at trying to find a way to make the community better and all of us together will have to decide what's best to use that, but that we are in, you know, this is a very tough property. I just want to make sure so that we don't have anything that's, to Mr. Landwehr's point, so we have nothing that's rumored out there. We will work with people, including a developer, when they come. Obviously, our interest is always in looking out for the best interests of Heartland. I just don't want a whole bunch of rumors started, so I'm putting it to bed right now and we work closely.
And that's a good thing, I will tell you this, is looking at the overall county, there's a lot of pressure on us right now. I did a town hall meeting and I said, we are one of the hottest counties in the state and right now in the country in terms of development. You, as people that are responsible for this municipality, there will be people coming at you, this is just the beginning.
Yep.
We've warned the other, some of the other municipalities, they're going to keep on coming. We've heard a lot of things, so good luck with this, but be prudent. I will say this as a local taxpayer, I would be with Mr. Landwehr, I would fight you on that bond. So, but I, you know, we be prudent and be responsible and just, you know, honestly, we have, it's in our favor at this point, so we don't have to give everything to the developers. It's in our favor, take a long look and make sure it works out for all the taxpayers.
Well, that's why I wanted to come out and have the president turn around and give our ministers, tell them we have nothing to get these rumors, because they are going around town where the village is nuts. You're going to spend five million dollars to help that developer make money on his property.
Well, it just, can you seem strange, you got an area that right now is zoned for twenty-six houses and we want to put a hundred and twenty-six in there?
No, it's not twenty-six.
How many, it's zoned right now for how many?
It's not zoned for anything right now, but the comprehensive plan says at minimum you could put ninety-five on there. I mean, at maximum, you could put ninety-five under there under the current zoning.
Where the condos are going.
I mean, under the current comprehensive plan.
Where the condos are going.
Yeah.
What about where the rest of the area? We'll, and we'll end up being able to address this, I'm just saying, because more people from the public may come, I'm not, and Mike, I'm not shooting you down, I want to make sure we stay within the...
Oh, I wouldn't let you do that.
This will, okay. It's just that on our agenda for everybody viewing, it says that we have a consideration to just talk and discuss an update on this. We don't know where that's going, okay? We have some things going on, obviously, people can see the minutes of the Plan Commission meetings or they can come. That's where a lot of this goes on. So, I'm just saying, for the public, you can come, I don't want this to turn into people thinking anything's being done in darkness. You're in a vacuum, it's not.
A lot of people don't understand the planning that goes forth at the county, so I appreciate that we could talk to people, let them know, things in our five, the six-year plan, we do things very deliberately at the county, so you're not the only municipality that goes, we want to change this road tomorrow, we're going, sorry, we can't do that, so.
You know, and that's why I want to keep people informed because now you come out with a hundred, I've heard up to a hundred and fifty condos in that spot.
Well, and this is going back to, we're almost getting outside of that, but now at the Plan Commission, if people came, there was a request, but it didn't go that far, but we have so much, I don't want to get too far outside of that.
So, what is the bottom line?
I really don't. This was just to be an update.
What is the bottom line update? Is it just dead right now?
The bottom line update is that, in all honesty.
It's dead right now.
Which we want to be as honest, that nothing's dead. It's just that the county cannot put this in. They have two hundred different projects and unfortunately, well, whatever, I'm used, that's an analogy, but they have, all these projects, we're down here, they only have enough money for above this line. They need to do these, someday we're going to fit in there, different things like safety and density, increase that, but how do you go to other leaders in the county that are sitting on the same board and they, they're just not going, they're going to be like, you want us to do what road? Youngblood, they don't even know how to say it.
So, the developer has to actually go back to the drawing board and go to the Planning Commission again?
Well, then we will end up going over, we will end up discussing that with them. I don't have an update on it.
Well, of course, all that's got to go to the Plan Commission to come out and say if there's fifty houses or...
When it's up to you as the municipality.
Right.
And the county is going to be stuck with that.
Thank you, Paul.
That intersection anyhow, though. Because that's a mess.
Well, that's something that we have to, all I'm doing and we are doing and the administrator and myself talk together to say, let's give an update. One was requested, we wanted to give an update. That's what we're doing, but we don't want to get ahead of ourselves because otherwise, I think, and I, I think that in fact the administrator would caution me. If I got too far ahead of myself, now you're talking about things that are assumption and not facts, we want facts. And that's where things are at.
Speaking of facts, let's just talk quickly, the Plan Commission will look at the comprehensive planning issue again in February on the nineteenth and that'll come to the village board also in February. There, I would anticipate that there would be a public hearing on that in March before there's any final action by, by the board.
Right.
And that's good that we bring it up because these rumors, one gets worse than the other, you know?
Well, there shouldn't be any rumors now.
Well, I mean, that's...
Unless someone's not watching or reading. I can't do much better than, well, I could try. I'll get out there, I'll hit the road.
But that's all I wanted here, that's all I care about.
All right. Any other discussion on this? Did anybody else have any other comments? So, we've had an update. Any questions? Feel free to call your elected officials, you can find those on villageofheartland.com, click Government, Village Board. Our numbers are there, you can call us if you'd like to discuss it.
Call Paul.
Or come to the Planning Commission meeting.
Call Paul.
So, next item on the agenda, we have a discussion and consideration of a policy regarding agenda preparation.
If you want to, I can, whichever you want to.
The, the village administrator and myself kind of worked together, we kind of got a heads up. We had, there was an article in a municipal magazine that most of us receive in the, from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities and it was mainly, at first, it was written about presiding officers, so for instance, the village president and sometimes they, I guess it sounds like, think like they have, they think they have too much power, like that they set the agenda. The fact of the matter is the public in our looking into it sets the agenda. There also was the misunderstanding and I think sometimes even from residents of Heartland, that the administrator makes that agenda. Well, obviously, if you put too much on the agenda, that's fine, but if anybody has a thought that a president or a trustee or the administrator or anybody in the village is keeping items off the agenda, we wanted to clarify where we were going with that. So, the big statement, we came up with a policy on agenda making, people from the public, you can contact your elected officials, any of them, or you can call into the administrator or, and talk about things and request items be on the agenda. It doesn't guarantee they'll be on there, but most likely, you can figure out some resolution. No one actually sets the agenda. The agenda that we have for any village board meeting, as is here, is the agenda of the people of Heartland. So, many different people, trustees, note, the trustees have just as much power to have something put on the agenda as myself and that's what this agenda is solidifying, okay? We have other people in the community that if they request something to be on it, it's going to be on it. If there was something very important from the chairman of the Waukesha County Board, we're not going to say no to that, especially with him being a resident, the bid president, Business Improvement District, if it's something very important to talk about, of the administrator. So, in looking at it, the municipal code dictates what gets put on the agenda for the first few items. Every single meeting, we have the vouchers for payments and things of that nature. That's in the municipal code, you can go and read that on the Village of Heartland also, their website or our website. But to get to what I'm saying, it appears that someone makes the agenda, here's the way it really works. The clerk and the administrator and the clerk were diligently all week with their staff and hence, when you go up to the counter inside the village hall, you see all the staff there. They work all week to assemble the agenda. They take all these pieces of this puzzle and they put it together based on a municipal code that's already written, so the vouchers will always be in the same spot. And then they put it together and they give us our, our agenda. So, the reason that it was important, I feel like we did this because number one, there's a policy, so no one can come at anyone and say, oh, it was only your agenda. a policy, so no one can come at anyone and say, oh, it was only your agenda. This agenda is for the people, it's made from the people in the village of Heartland. We have a finance director, a police chief, all of these people will put things in and send them to the administrator or the clerk and request they be on there, so no one person actually has control over the agenda. And everybody is responsible for the agenda, and that'll make your head spin for a minute, because it did mine, but it's the real truth. No one person has control over the agenda, but the staff that we have do work diligently, and they assemble it, and I'll kind of turn it to the administrator, if there's any comments you'd like to add, Dave, please do, if I haven't, you know, if I've missed anything.
No, let me, I can just, to the, to the language of the policy is, there are really four items described in the policy, and they are, the statement that is essentially what President Fanner still talked about, is that there is, the body is in control of its own agenda, and no individual can remove something from the agenda, or block it, or defer an item indefinitely. Assembly, as you talked about, is going to be handled by staff, generally the village administrator with the assistance of the clerk, just to produce it and get it together so that we can meet our statutory requirements for notice, and there is some order to the items being considered. Submission of items, there is a description in the policy that says that board members who want something on the agenda should notify the administrator by the end of the day of the Thursday before the meeting, so that we can produce, put it on the agenda that Friday, and make sure that there's material for it, so that there can be a good discussion. It talks about how staff items are done at the village administrator's discretion, and when those are ready. Members of the public don't have to be on the agenda to talk to the village board, if there are items that require action, generally, those will come through the administrative offices. So, that's really the meat of the creation of it, and I know for those of you that are playing along, I said four things, here's number four. The last item is that all of those things relate to not only the village board, but to all the other bodies of the village, so that's plan commission, park board, et cetera, et cetera. All the other bodies of the village have to adhere to this same general policy, where it might not be the village administrator that produces the meeting agenda, it might be the police, the police department, or it might be the public works department that handles that, so, that's the last item that, that is generally described in the policy.
So, thank you. Does anybody else have anything they want to add on this? Hopefully, that was clear enough, if you have any questions on it, you can give a call or send an email. So, that was just, any public comments on that?
You are set that you could adopt that policy and make it firm, if you'd like.
That's, that's where I was going to go next.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay, I was just going to say, I would entertain a motion to adopt that policy for the village of Heartland and its agenda making, and I'm going to include in there, just to reiterate what the administrator said, this does affect all of our boards and commissions.
Also moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda making policy for the boards and commissions in committees in the village of Heartland. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. We have all kinds of fun stuff, that's different, but that's okay, we're getting there. Next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding the designation of an official newspaper and village publicity, publicity meaning how we get info out to the public. If someone from the public ends up wanting to give a comment, please indicate in some way by... For the board, do we, we have to have a motion to discuss?
No.
Okay.
No, there is no motion.
I'll give, I had, I had gone and we talked, and our administrator fiscally looking out for the village, I had gone to him, and I talked to him, and he raised my eyebrows because there's a chance that some of these things could cost a lot of money, but we did some looking into them, and I'll end up referring to those. But, we've kind of lost our newspaper. We used to have the Lake Country Reporter, which is no longer a newspaper, but rather a subsection of a newspaper. The Lake Country Reporter used to be, going back to years past, 30, 40 pages thick, and there was things on happenings inside of Heartland, there was, I mean, things going on at the churches, things going on at nonprofit organizations, events going on at the parks, and all kinds of different...
Chamber.
Everything going on in Heartland, or a much better way. Now, we don't have a lot of that, and it came to our attention that, there's just not a lot of news in Heartland, and anyone, the only people that get the news out of the Lake Country Reporter, if you go and buy it at a grocery store or gas station, you have to buy the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, the Lake Country Reporter, or Lake Country Now, which they've changed it to, is not in there. So, the only people getting it are subscribers. So, this discussion is to talk about, do we want to take steps to make it easier to get information out to the public? One of those was an idea I had, and that's where we really need to discuss this, is we had, I had wondered, you know, they've done a very large article on the new Ecos Committee, where our director of Department of Public Works went out and met with the, a reporter from the Waukesha Freeman, and it was a front page article, which I thought was fantastic, but they seemed to be looking at us more, and so I've looked into it a little bit, and anyways, I'm going to open it up from there. They did do the same thing in, in McQuanago, used to be the McQuanago chief, which was the same as our Lake Country Reporter, it kind of went away, so they ended up making the Freeman their paper, and it's been rumored that they get more inclusion, and they're included on the, for lack of a better term, beat. Whether or not that's completely true or not, if someone has something to say to it, that's great, because I don't, I don't know if it's true, but I've heard it, so...
Yes, I can say this from a county standpoint, we weren't getting much coverage, and all of a sudden, when the Lake Country Reporter and other local papers got pulled into it, instead of Journal Sentinel, it was a good business move, county decided that maybe we should be Waukesha County's newspaper again. And they are covering county, we actually have reporters, we haven't had reporters at committee or other meetings for a while, now we do. And they are getting out into it, we've encouraged them to get out to the communities as well.
You're, you're speaking, when you say county, you mean Waukesha County Freeman, correct?
The Waukesha Freeman.
Yes, yes. So, I would open, that's how this came about, if anybody in the board, I think it's good to try to find a way to get news out to people, it does, the numbers of it, is that...
The numbers aren't great. I mean, according to the material we got, that Darlene got from Waukesha Freeman, they have 244 subscriptions in Heartland.
Well, I meant the numbers on money-wise, but yeah, those numbers, the subscription rates are not good.
The monetary numbers aren't significant.
You got one more, because I just applied to it, because...
I will, I will say that I did mention to Jeff when this came out, that the Heartland Chamber of Commerce, we've also had minor discussions about how to get our information out, because without the Heartland Reporter, things like our Lake Country Community Fest, we used to have a whole page on that, you know, now it's, and every week, there would be, the Heartland Chamber would have a page in the Delafield, was it, headed page, you know, and now what do we do? And you had talked to Lynn at the chamber.
I did, and, and one thing I also talked to in talking with Dave about this, when they have two options, see, if we go with an official newspaper, now it kind of, I'm not going to say handcuffs, but restrains. It restrains because now, when Dave or Darlene are like, hey, we got to get this notice out, they can't say, okay, who can run it? They have to say, okay, this is our official paper, we got to run it through there, so there's, there's some give and take where we have to kind of decide, because it will be a slight strain, I shouldn't even, but you alluded to that, I don't know whether it'd be slight, or maybe in some cases, really unfortunate, because the Freeman only runs on, you were correct, Monday through Friday, that's kind of a free section, I don't even know if you can publish in there on Saturdays, but Monday through Friday, the Lake Country Now, which is not sold at the gas stations, it's only subscribers, but that is only run on Sundays and Wednesdays.
Freeman, though, is Tuesday through Saturday.
Yeah, here's Saturday.
They changed it, they don't have Monday anymore.
Thank you, that's why you're here, thank you.
Which is very important, too, that gets mailed to everybody, and that's a huge piece, and that's what the chamber's working with them as well.
If anybody from the public wants to come up with input, if they think for or against, I'm just saying, feel free to come up, and, I mean, I suppose it's working fine like this, but I'm going to kind of open it up to the board, I've just thrown some information, it was something that come up, I just wanted to discuss it, I don't know what you guys think about it.
Donna will know.
So, the paper, so the paper doesn't go out on Mondays, huh?
No.
No wonder I didn't get it, because I just started. Okay.
We're all in the play today.
The monthly one? I don't know.
The monthly one, so I used to work for the Lake Country Reporter, so, knowing that that's gone, and I also know that we did, we were in Oconomok where we had the Oconomok Focus, and then, the Waukesha Freeman has their enterprise, the Oconomok Enterprise there. So, we would always fight for who would be the record of the paper of choice on record for the, for that community specifically. And no matter which one would win, we'd still run the pieces, so, if we picked the Freeman as our paper of choice, it's not going to eliminate you from being in the Reporter, although, honestly speaking, I don't know how much longer the Reporter will even be as little it is around, how much more it will be due to the cutbacks of all the local presence that they used to have around. Even our sports reporter, Chuck Dousman now, is over at the Freeman, and they're just really gaining a lot of ground from just having the localism in there, because they never, they didn't really have that, the Freeman didn't, so they're taking advantage of it, so, I mean, I think that's a great way, and for the chamber, we're also going to, we're checking in with the Freeman as well to do our monthly release, so every month, they actually mail a monthly, kind of a synopsis of what was in the paper, what was highlighted in the community, the Freeman does, and then we're talking about inserting into that, to get more information out, too.
All right.
Can that be law, or does that have to be subscription only?
The monthly one is just mailed, that's not subscribed.
Okay.
That's just a mail, and you can request it if you wouldn't get it.
Okay.
So, I also wanted to run, I know you don't hardly ever say anything, but, do you have a preference, would it bother you much if it went this way, or do you have a preference where there's something you would want to say where you're like, this is...
No.
Just throwing it out.
No, the only comment is that, as you saw in the last paragraph of the memo that I did for you, is that the statutes do require that if we designate, then we really have to use that for any legal notices.
Right, and that's what I was referring to, to the restraints, we have to use it for those legal notices, but then, we have to use it for those legal notices, we wouldn't be able to send our legal notices to Lake Country Now, because everybody, the whole idea would be, everybody would be looking in the Freeman, and that's where they would be looking if we designated it as our paper.
Yeah, Tom Brass, 151 East Capital Drive, I want a business property here. I just want to say this, I just recently started subscribing to the Waukesha Freeman after being a diehard Lake Country Reporter for years, and I've been in the village for 25 years. Number one, since the paper to Milwaukee Journal's been taken over by Gannett Papers, which in the same time took over community papers, you've seen a drastic reduction in Gannett Corporate worrying about what's going on here, not only in Wisconsin and Milwaukee, but especially in small communities. My personal feeling is, I think within a year, you won't even see a community newspaper out there, because Gannett, I feel, doesn't even want to deal with it. That being said, we have here at Waukesha Freeman, which is a privately owned newspaper, I think they're getting in new people that are coming in and employment there, that have new ideas, and are realizing that this paper has an opportunity to have a larger subscription. I talked to an employee that works there, and they told me, and I can't give you the facts on this, but since the Lake Country Reporter ended, when I say Lake Country, the community newspapers as a whole, how they reduce their, sending out the papers, they've had 1,100 new subscribers by January 1st. That's a lot of new subscribers. Now, I, now at this time, I live in the town of Lisbon, I've got a Milwaukee mailing address. My, my paper that comes in the Milwaukee Journal, because I still subscribe to it, on Wednesdays, is the Northwest Reporter, which is Grafton, Cedarburg, and that area, but yet on Sunday, I get the Lake Country Reporter. When this first started, I went to the local Citco Station here to get the Wednesday newspaper, because I want to read, I'm the bid president, I want to read what's going on in the newspaper, and on a commercial basis, you can't even get it, and Gannett cut off the commercial paper there. So, individuals who may do business here in Heartland, or maybe they're in Merton, or outside the village of Heartland, I mean, they're not getting access to this paper. And I feel, just with the way I've seen this paper, it's $72 a year, it's a very good value for five days a week, and it gets mailed, that's a short sight, it's too bad they can't deliver it, but it gets mailed, so you get it when you get home at night, but it's a very good deal, you get five days a week, and what I'm starting to see with the Waukesha Freeman, is they're, they just had an article in there about two weeks ago, where they're going to be cutting back on some of the, they used to have the ice cream taste of the day. They're getting rid of that stuff, they're getting rid of some other things to open up more paper space for the local communities, and they stated that in the paper. And I think as time goes on, you're going to see more and more of that, and what I'd hope they do, if the village of Heartland would start subscribing to this newspaper and spend money with this newspaper, that they would actually take their reports and say, let's keep an eye on, on Heartland, let's do some special reporting, which I think you're seeing from McQuanago and Oconomok, they seem to be mentioned in there a lot, I don't know where they do their legislative reporting, whatever you call it, but I would hope to see that happen here, and I'm all for going to the Waukesha Freeman. I think that the paper is going to stay here, I don't trust Gannett Papers, the way they're going, and let's support somebody that's locally owned and run by a business owner that's in our state of Wisconsin.
Thank you.
To follow up on that, if you have material and you submit it to the Freeman, they will publish it within a very short period of time. So, they have done that, if you send photos, they've been very good to the Waukesha County Business Alliance, to the county as well, if you submit, and they will publish it as if, so, it also gives you another, another mouthpiece. I think, as Tom said, I think it's, it's growing, we are seeing, they've hired new reporters, we are seeing their growth, and they have a strong commitment now back to Waukesha County.
And their social media has a very large leg on it, and it's got a lot of followers, it's bumped up about 80% in return, basically in the county this last year.
Is it that we make the Freeman our official newspaper?
You can make a motion, I believe, I do, does listing it as discussion only prohibit?
No, probably not.
It's your call.
You'd be all right.
The administrator has stated, you will be okay making a motion, even though we only had it listed for discussion.
Okay, then I'll make the motion that we set up the Waukesha Freeman as official newspaper for the village of Heartland.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to make the Waukesha Freeman the official paper of the village of Heartland. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Another part of that was village publicity, but we're not going to go into that tonight, we did, we talked about enough. Next item is announcements.
I'm waiting for the fire chief. All yours tonight, sir.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
As you've heard, I undoubtedly will have more comments for you at future meetings, but I want to just lay the groundwork for the fact that I am retiring, I will be going on to employment at Carroll University, but February 28th, we will have a retirement celebration, and you've got the details on that at Heartland Elementary North. I simply will say tonight that I've enjoyed my time with this board, I've enjoyed my time in this village, and I'll make additional comments at my last meeting that I attend, but this is a great place to work, and I am going to miss it terribly, but it is time to move on to another chapter in my life. But I want to thank you all for your service to the public. Public service is undoubtedly challenging at times, but also very rewarding, and I will leave this community a better person for it, and I hope that the community is better because I've been here, but I will, again, make more comments on my last meeting, I'll be with you yet for the month of February, so I will see you then. But thank you all for everything you've done for me personally, and for what you do for this community.
Thank you. For over 30 years of service, I don't think it's right to only wait until the end when you're walking out to stand and give credit where credit is due.
Thank you.
For everything that you have done for this community, I, you're a class act. Chief Beggin, you are a class act. Any other announcements? Entertaining?
I move we adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.